Mr. Chief Executive, I believe we can, we can start. If Nate is ready? It's all yours, Mr. Chief Executive.
Okay, thanks, John. I'm going to call the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners' regular meeting for Wednesday, July 1st, 2020 to order. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Chief Executive, we have 11 present, one absent. Commissioner Anderson is excused.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Anderson is missing and excused. Commissioner McDonough, do you have the pledge?
I do both, if you like.
Okay, thank you.
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night. Since we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow, direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen. Thank you.
Pledge as well?
Yeah, we may as well. Go ahead.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which has, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, for the approval of the minutes of the June 17th, 2020, regular meeting minutes. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I make a motion that we approve the June 17th regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second?
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the June 17th, 2020, regular meeting minutes. Is there anything, will everyone please vote? Or is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Mr. Chief Executive, what?
Like 11, 0?
Yeah, we have 11 ye, 0 nae.
I don't see any items not addressed on the agenda this evening. Under the chief executive report first, I'll say, right after, for the candidates that are out there waiting online, we'll get to you in just a few minutes and we'll have the interview process take place. First, we have a few more items. Under the chief executive's report, I'd just like to report on the pool condition. The pipe was repaired. Concrete was poured yesterday. And it has to set up for a couple of days and then they'll put the plaster on the top, coat it off. After that sets up, they'll be able to fill the pool. So hopefully when the weather gets nice again, the pool will be full. Get moving on that. As you all noticed, we've had a couple of COVID-19 cases in Butte Silver Bow, and they're still doing a lot of contact tracing to see. Two of them were related to travel. Two people in their early twenties were in California and traveled back up here and then came ill. So that's two of them. And then we have two elderly men, well, they're not elderly. I booked, they're 150 and 160. So, but they're still doing contact tracing on those two individuals. Hopefully, the numbers will stay down and we'll get through the Fourth of July with their numbers staying down. That's all I have on my report. Now we'll go to public comment on any items on the agenda. Commissioner Morgan, is anyone calling in?
Let me go to the phone, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Chief Executive, there's no call-ins.
Okay. And next, I think I'm going to move the communication to be read and acted upon up ahead of the public hearing. And this is the communication number 2020-249. John Morgan, Chairman Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners, informing the Council of the process to appoint an interim public administrator on July 1st, and to set the declaration of nomination to be on today, June 22nd, through Friday, July 3rd. And the clerk and recorder's office. Commissioner Morgan, you will turn it over to me.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and welcome to all the candidates that are out there today looking, looking to interview for this position. A couple of things that I want to go through first of all is, is a little bit about the process of what we're going to go through tonight. And if, if anybody has any questions, we can take them. After I'm done going through a brief overview of the process, our IT department will be moving the candidates over to a virtual lobby. And then as it is their turn to interview for the position, they will be brought back into the regular meeting. There is a couple of things that I just want to go through. First of all, in order, once the council had to go through and work on the process of appointing a interim public administrator, we also had to start a declaration of nomination. And if you refer to my communication on tonight's agenda, which is 2020-249, I did, we did concur that the declaration of nomination would be June 22nd through Friday, July 3rd. As you know, Friday, July 3rd is considered a holiday, being that the Fourth is on a Saturday. So that date will actually be changed to Monday, July 6th. For anybody that's wishing to apply for the position, needs to go to the clerk and recorder's office and fill out the declaration of nomination by 5:00 on Monday, July 6th. So if there's any questions about the position or when to file, I would encourage anybody to contact the clerk and recorder's office and, and have their questions answered at that point. The other thing that, as far as the process tonight goes, we did have six candidates actually apply for the position. One of them was deemed not qualified based on the residency requirement of living in Butte Silver Bow. The other candidates were vetted by the Butte Silver Bow Human Resources Department, verifying that they have lived in Butte for a, over a year, and obviously are over the age of 18 in order to qualify for the position. So we will be going through tonight's questions. The commissioners, if, can you unmute? If anybody, or there is questions that have been forwarded to all the candidates, I do thank everybody for, you know, working with us during this process. It just added a, a new complexity to this, this process being it online. And so in order to make it fair for everybody, we did forward the questions on so that every candidate had the options of seeing the questions before we ask them, just to make sure of that. Once we go through and we complete the, the questions or the interviews for the five candidates that we have tonight, I would ask that the commissioners be called upon one at a time and give two names to Mr. Chief Executive saying who your top two candidates are. At that time, our clerk, or our clerk of the court, or clerk, will be tallying those in the top two vote getters will move on to the next stage where the commissioners will be asked to vote for one of the two candidates going forward. So just, it's the same process that we've always done. It just is a little bit more complex with us meeting on a virtual situation. So if anybody has any questions, or any of the commissioners, Mr. Chief Executive, I would ask that they ask them now. Okay, doesn't look like, is Mr. Chief Executive still on the meeting? We're going to go check what happened to the chief executive. It looks like he got dropped off this call.
I'm, I'm here, John.
Oh, okay. One, one thing that I did forget to mention for the candidates that are waiting here is we will be interviewing the candidates in alphabetical order. And so that's the order that we will be going off of. So, Mr. Chief Executive, I don't know if the commissioners have any questions before we begin.
Okay. Are there any questions on the process so far from the commissioners? Hey, seeing none, I guess we can go to the first candidate and I believe she was having some audio problems.
Mr. Chief Executive, we're, IT is going to move a few of them to the lobby. And once that is done, we will, we will be right back. Again, thanks, everybody, for your patience. This is the first time we've had to do this in this type of format, and I expect that we're, we might run into a few issues, but just work with us and we'll get through it. So, thank you. Ben, could you please tell us if you're on this meeting? Ben Gerdler? Ben, are you on this meeting? One second. All right, Mr. Chief Executive, I believe we're ready to, to start. The, the first candidate is Adriana Atchison. Adriana, if, if you're here, can you let us know that, please?
Okay, I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
We, we can hear you. Thank you. Welcome to the interview. All kinds of fun, right?
Yeah.
Adriana, as I indicated earlier, we're going to ask you five questions. And just, I believe that you've seen the questions, and so I, I would just ask that you answer them. And then at that point, we will move on to the next candidate from there. So, any questions before we start?
I don't think so.
Okay. Adriana, the, the first question that I have is, why do you feel that you are the best qualified candidate for the interim public administrator position?
I feel like I'm qualified bestly because I am organized, I am detail oriented, I kind of have an investigative personality, I like to get to the bottom of things. I work well independently as well as collaboratively with others. And I am ready to work and eager to learn.
Okay. The next question is, do you have any education, training, or experience that directly relates to the interim public administrator position?
I have an associate's degree. It's in medical assisting. So that is both front clinical and back office, such as coding and billing and accounting. And then I also have, I worked two years with developmentally disabled adults or aware, and I really enjoyed that job.
Okay. The, the third question is, please explain your perception of the public administrator's role in the community.
So my perception would be is act as a guardian to people with developmentally disabled or mentally delayed problems, or if they don't have any family, friends, or heirs, as well as deceased people in the same situation who doesn't, don't have any family, friends, or heirs. And from my understanding, it's if a minor inherits an estate, you said all that as well, if they don't have any other family to help represent them.
Okay. Number four, will you run for the position when it comes up for, for election? And did you hear my, my comments on the filing with the clerk and recorder's office?
I would run, but I did not hear your comment.
So the, we did declare a declaration of nomination to go from June 22nd to Friday, July 3rd. Since the Friday, July 3rd is a holiday, that has been moved to Monday, July 6th by 5:00. If you're interested in filing for the position, I would encourage you to go to the clerk and recorder's office and file the appropriate paperwork to be on the ballot in the general election in November.
Okay.
Okay. So just to recap that, would you run for the position in the election? Okay. And the fifth and final question is, when would you be available to start?
I would be available on the 6th of July.
Okay. All right, Adriana, that's all the questions that we have, and I really do want to thank you for participating in this and applying for the position. Okay?
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chief Executive, we'll move on to the next candidate, which is Lisa Dennehy. Ms. Dennehy, are you, oh. Ms. Dennehy, are you in, in attendance?
I'm here, yes.
Welcome to the, to the council meeting and to the interviews.
Thank you.
Lisa, we're going to go through and ask you a series of five questions, which I believe you've been forwarded as of today. If you have any questions, please let me know before we start the process, and we will just go through these questions now if you are ready.
That sounds good. I'm ready.
All right. Lisa, the, the first question is, why do you feel that you are the best qualified candidate for the interim public administrator position?
I'm, Josh, I'm actually council of record for all of the open probate matters that are currently being worked in, through the office today. I've been working with Janice for several months now since she had stepped back from her law practice. So I, I think it would be a fairly seamless handoff, and I'm well positioned to step in and pick up on the work that Janice has done, address any open items, and just, you know, continue to move things forward to closing.
Okay. Thank you. Number two is, do you have any education, training, or experience that directly relates to the interim public administrator position?
I do. I'm an attorney. I'm a member of the Montana bar, and I've been working with Frank Joseph and practicing now for about a year and a half, focused primarily on estate and trust work, probate administration, and some guardianship work, all of which are directly related to this position. And again, I, I am the attorney of record for the open probate matters that are, that are currently before the office. So it, it all directly relates.
Okay. Number three, please explain your perception of the public administrator's role in the community.
The public administrator is really charged with handling, you know, final administration for the affairs of someone who, who died in Butte Silver Bow, when there's no one available or, or willing to serve as personal representative or the executor of their estate. To, to a lesser degree, the, the public administrator can be called upon to act as a guardian or conservator for someone who's mentally disabled or, or otherwise a protected person, who doesn't have anyone, again, to fulfill that role. But, but primarily, the, the public administrator is going to serve as personal representative of the estate where there's no one who's available or willing to perform that function. So you do, you know, research on the heirs, marshaling or gathering of the assets of the decedent. And then if there's money and assets available, you pay any of the just debts or claims, costs of administration, and then distribute any remaining money to the, to the heirs or the devises that you've been able to locate. And then, I mean, ultimately, if no one's available, then any, any remaining money is for the sheikh of the state.
Okay. The next question, will you run for the position when it comes up for election? The one thing that I would add to that is, is earlier, previous to the introduction of, of this process, I did mention the declaration of nomination is from June 22nd through July 3rd in my communication. July 3rd is a holiday, so that has been moved to Monday, July 6th. So if you're interested in filing for the position, I would encourage you to go to the clerk and recorder's office before Monday and fill out those paperwork. But the question is, is will you file for the position when it comes up for election?
I, I am open to that. I was thinking that I hadn't until August 1st filed, so that, that was, that was different. But I am open to it. I'll make a final decision here over the course of the week, but I'm open to it yet.
Okay. And number five, would you, when would you be available to start?
As I stated earlier, I'm involved in the, the open probate matters that are being worked in the office today. So from a practical standpoint, I, I've started already. Having said that, you know, I'm available to start anytime.
Okay. Thank you very much for attending this meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate you having me.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, mine too.
Mr. Chief Executive, the next candidate that I have is Ben Gerdler. I apologize if I mispronounced that name. Ben, are, are you on this meeting? We don't, we don't have any response from Ben Gerdler. Okay. Ben, if you're on this meeting, if you could please let us know. Okay. Mr. Chief Executive, it appears Ben Gerdler did not attend this meeting for the interview. I would move on to the fourth candidate, Luana Johnson. Ms. Johnson, are you on this meeting? Ms. Johnson?
Can you hear me?
I, we can hear you and we can, we can see you as well. So welcome to this meeting.
Good.
Ms. Johnson, just, so you know, we're, we're going to go through and ask a series of questions. There are five questions, and I believe you've been forwarded those questions earlier today, as with all the other candidates. And so I'm just going to go through and answer any of those, or ask you those questions. And if you have any questions, please let me know. If you need me to repeat anything, also let me know that as well. The, the first question that I have is, why do you feel that you are the best qualified candidate for the interim public administrator position?
Well, I have quite a few years' experience working with determining eligibility and looking into the financial affairs of patients who apply for welfare, and also working at, for Montana's institutional reimbursement department at Montana State Hospital.
Okay. Number two, do you have any education, training, or experience that directly relates to the interim public administrator position?
I do. It's mostly experience with financial affairs. Five years working in a welfare office in Spokane, Washington, looking into eligibility for financial benefits for individuals. And then I worked for seven years for Eastern Area Personnel where we had to work with human resources managers, eastern part of the state. And that required knowledge of the Washington Administrative Code, the federal code, the merit system rule. I'm familiar with looking into those types of codes, Montana Code annotated. And then I worked for five years as a financial investigator at Montana State Hospital. This was for institutional reimbursement. We looked into all of the financial situation of patients at Montana State Hospital to determine whether they had the ability to pay for their care at the hospital. And the last 14 years, I worked with the attorney at Montana State Hospital as his paralegal assistant and a patient advocate. It was a variety of duties, but the main one that kind of pertained to the public administrator position is when I helped patients who are chronically ill and their parents have died. And if they were chronically ill before the age of 22, they're eligible for social security benefits underneath their deceased parents' benefits. And that takes quite a bit of investigation because most of the patients at that time are elderly, and we have to find medical information that they were ill before the age of 22. So that's probably the most rewarding, and the position that, or the job duties that help, that pertain to the public administrator position.
Okay.
Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
The third question is, is please explain your perception of the public administrator's role in the community.
Well, looking at the statutes, Montana Code annotated, it, it, I envisioned a position settling in the state of people who die before without a will, or if they don't have heirs that are appointed as a public, their personal representative. It also, I think, researches for heirs of people who have died, whether they're in Montana or anywhere else in the world. You have to investigate to determine the value of the estate, whether or not they have property, real estate, assets. And that, I would assume that takes quite a bit of time. Then you have to arrange for the sale of the assets or the property. This is all working through the court with the, through the district judge, is what I understand. And then there is a monthly and a yearly accounting that you have to put before the judge and the court, monthly and a yearly report.
Okay. As I indicated before, I'm going to move on to, to question number four, is, is will you run for the position when it comes? for the position when it comes up for election? As I indicated earlier, we did do a declaration of nomination that goes from June 22nd to Friday, July 3rd. Being that July 3rd is a holiday, that was moved up to July 6th at 5:00 in the clerk and recorder's office. And that is where, if you're looking at running for this position, you can file the paperwork with the clerk and recorder's office. And so I would encourage you to take note of that date. But will you run for the position when it comes up for election?
I will.
And number five, the final question is, when would you be available to start?
I could start immediately. The position, I did talk to the previous public administrator, and it sounds like it's a part-time position. Right now, I still am working at Montana State Hospital, but that will be going part-time. And so I feel like I could do both, at least until November and after the election. And then I may be retiring from my Montana State Hospital position.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us for this interview, and I do appreciate you to joining this interview.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chief Executive, I would move on to our fifth and final candidate, which is Thomas Walker. Thomas Walker, are you in this meeting? Tommy Walker? Okay. Tommy Walker, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Tommy, welcome to this meeting. We have a little bit of a feedback issue. I don't know if... Okay, that sounds a little better. Welcome to the interview. As I indicated earlier, I'm going to go through and ask you a series of questions, which is my understanding that you were forwarded earlier today from our HR department. And we'll go through each one of those and allow you the opportunity to answer those. Do you have any questions before we begin?
No, I don't.
Okay. The first question is, is why do you feel that you are the best qualified candidate for the interim public administrator position?
I have experience working with aware. I worked 14 years as director of adult mental health for the state of Montana. And in that position, I was a legal guardian and medical power of attorney for many staff. I'm currently a guardian student. So I do have experience. I feel that I'm fair and I'm a high up in case of death. And I want to be a voice for people who may not be able to make decisions for themselves.
Okay. The second question is, is do you have any education, training, or experience that directly relates to the interim public administrator position?
As I said before, I worked for aware in that role as the director of adult mental health. I worked with mentally ill adults from State Hospital and from Lewis Town. And I had to become their legal guardian and also their medical power of attorney. So I had to make life or death decisions for them, you know, all hours of the night, whenever I was called. And I just feel I have that experience, and that will help in this role.
Okay. Thank you. Number three is, please explain your perception of the public administrator's role in the community.
Okay, I think as a fiduciary, you're ethically bound to act in someone's interest for their well-being. And a lot of times, if someone expires and they do not have a current will or any thing determined, then you have to locate their heirs and try to make sure that their finances and their assets are all in order. You have to sometimes, let me see, collect and manage their assets, and you have to settle the descendant's debt sometimes. And then distribute the remaining assets between the heirs after you've located them, make decisions as to who gets the asset or property, whatever is involved.
Okay. The next question is, will you run for the position when it comes up for election? And before you answer that, as I indicated earlier, we did declare the declaration of nomination to be Monday, June 22nd through Friday, July 3rd. Being that July 3rd is a holiday, we did move that to Monday, July 6th at 5:00 in the clerk and recorder's office. So if you are interested in filing for the position to be on the ballot, I would encourage you to go to the clerk and recorder's office and look at that process. But will you run for the position when it comes up for election?
Yes, I will.
Okay. And the fifth and final...
And I am familiar with that. I have ran for an office before, so I'm familiar with the filing process.
Okay. And the fifth and final question is, is when would you be available to start?
Okay, I currently, I don't work. I just stay home and have a studio in my home and I paint. And I just sell paintings, so I would actually be able to start immediately.
Okay. Well, Tommy, thank you for joining this interview process, and thank you for applying for this position.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Chief Executive, that concludes the actual interviews of the candidates for the public administrator position.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Morgan. Now, if each candidate, you told your process, there's going to be each one would vote for one position or one person, John?
So, Mr. Chief Executive, the first round, I would ask that the commissioners vote for their top two candidates. We are going to do this in a verbal format. So for instance, if they called my name, I would say who my candidates are, and Colleen here will tally up the votes as we're done. So, top two candidates, and then after that, those, the two candidates with the highest votes will move to the final selection, and then we will have another voting process to select one of the two, so.
Okay, well, I'll go through all the commissioners, and as I call your names, would you say your top two candidates' names, please? Commissioner Morgan.
One second, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Chief Executive, I would go with Lisa Dennehy and Luana Johnson.
Commissioner Shaw.
Commissioner Shaw, you're on mute.
Commissioner Shaw, you're on mute.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. All right.
I couldn't quite read your lips.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, for reminding me that I was on mute. My top two candidates are Luana Johnson and Tommy Walker.
Commissioner McStuffins.
Lisa Dennehy and Luana Johnson.
Hey, I... You're on mute. All right, now you can hear me? Adriana Atchison and Luana Johnson.
What was that?
I would vote for Adriana Atchison and Lisa Dennehy.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Lisa Dennehy and Luana Johnson. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Lisa Dennehy and Adriana Atchison.
Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. My top two are Lisa Dennehy and Luana Johnson.
Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. My top two candidates for the position of public administrator are Lisa Dennehy and Luana Johnson.
Commissioner Fredericson.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Palmer, my two choices are Lisa Dennehy and Luana Johnson.
Thank you. Will the clerk please tally the votes?
Commissioner Olson.
Read my lips. My two top candidates are Luana Johnson and Adriana Atchison.
Okay, thank you. Now, will the clerk please tally the votes?
Yeah, just give us one second, Mr. Chief Executive, and we, Colleen will add them up. Mr. Chief Executive, I'm just going to go through and read the names of the people that we chose, just to get rid of the confusion, and then Colleen's going to do a complete tally. So I'm just going to go off of number one. Lisa Dennehy, Luana Johnson, Lisa Dennehy, Luana Johnson, Lisa Dennehy, Lisa Dennehy, Lisa Dennehy, Lisa Dennehy, Lisa Dennehy, Adriana Atchison, and Adriana Atchison, Luana Johnson, Tommy Walker, Luana Johnson, Adriana Atchison, Luana Johnson, Luana Johnson, Luana Johnson, Adriana Atchison, Luana Johnson, Lisa Dennehy, and Luana Johnson. So, Mr. Chief Executive, looks like Adriana Atchison received four votes, Lisa Dennehy received eight, Luana Johnson received nine, and Tom Walker received one. So if you tally those up, there's 22 votes. So the top two candidates would be Luana Johnson with nine and Lisa Dennehy with eight.
Now, I believe the procedure will go down and narrow it down to the top two.
Correct. So if the commissioners would vote on Luana Johnson and Lisa Dennehy.
Okay, I'll go through and ask each commissioner, and if they would just state their preferred candidate. Commissioner McDonough.
Lisa Dennehy.
Commissioner Shaw. Still can't read your lips.
Oh, I know. Luana Johnson. Thank you.
Mayor Callahan.
Luana Johnson.
Commissioner Olson.
Luana Johnson. Thank you.
Commissioner Mannken. Still there? Commissioner Mannken, we vote. I think we're having a little bit of trouble with Eric, so we'll go on to Commissioner Fisher.
Lisa Dennehy.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Am I there?
Go ahead, Commissioner Mannken.
Lisa Dennehy.
I had better look at my lips than these lips. Could you repeat that one more time? Commissioner Mannken. Commissioner Morgan.
Lisa Dennehy.
Commissioner Sorge. You're on mute, John.
Lisa Dennehy.
Commissioner Shea.
Luana Johnson.
Commissioner Fredericson.
Lisa Dennehy.
Commissioner Mannken, can you hear us?
Lisa Dennehy.
Okay, thank you. Did I get everyone that time?
Josh O'Neill.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Lisa Dennehy.
Okay, so tally those up.
I tally. Commissioner, with the clerk, how many, what was your tally?
One second, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like Lisa Dennehy received seven votes and Luana Johnson received four.
That's what I had here too, so like Commissioner Morgan, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chief Executive, at this time, based on the procedure that we just followed, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Lisa Dennehy as the acting public administrator for Butts Silver Bow, and the HR department will be contacting her to set up the swearing in of her for the position.
John, did you need to place that on file?
And place this on file. Communication 2020-249.
Second.
So we have a motion made in second, and we'll appoint Lisa Dennehy as the interim public administrator, and place communication 2020-249 on file. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? The clerk, please record the vote. I think it's eleven to zero, motion carries. Do we have a public comment there, John? Commissioner Morgan?
Um, Mr. Chief Executive, I do have a couple to read. Um, if, if you want me to read those now, I can.
Were they, well, were they on the, there?
Oh, they're, I'll, I'll read them at the end of the meeting, Mr. Chief.
At the end of the meeting, okay. Um, so, next we'll go to the public hearing, Communication twenty twenty dash four eight. Dylan Tiffany, Assistant Planning Director, requesting counsel with Commissioner, Commissioner, to conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, July first, twenty twenty, on the Montana Connection subdivision. Do we have proof of publication? And Attorney Joyce, are you on the line?
Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publication, and it does appear to be in order.
Thank you. Dylan, are you on the line for staff report? We're not hearing you. Be the best public hearing we ever had. Still can't hear anything, Dylan. Have you got a phone there, or you can call in? Can you hear us, Dylan? Laurie?
Mr. Chief Executive, uh, Ms. Kennison is, is going down to assist them.
Should call in or hold up large sticky note?
Mr. Chief Executive, can you hear me now?
I can, go.
Okay. I called in. Okay. Uh, I have a short PowerPoint presentation, so. Is, is the echo gone? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. I have a quick PowerPoint presentation, so I'll share my screen. So, this is a, uh, preliminary path of the Montana Connection subdivision. It's located in Montana Connection Business Park, uh, just south of T.C.A. The land is owned by Butte Silver Bow. Um, still policy designation for this area is industrial. And the zoning is in the RM two rural heavy industrial zone. Um, the proposed lot area is from six point two four acres to fifty-four point four nine acres. Here's the proposed plan. The proposal is to create a road, uh, called Silverloaf Loop, that will, uh, loop from here and from Rick Jones Way, provide access to all nine lots. Um, water and sewer will be extended to serve all of the lot, as well as the industrial water out there. Uh, all the utilities have capacity. And, a few photos of the site, for those of you that haven't been out there. Right now, it's pretty flat, big brush. Um, this is a, a ditch that traverses the site that will be, it can drain stormwater, it'll be used for that. Uh, this is the side of where the road will come on, that Silverloaf Loop will meet Rick Jones Way, close to ninety-three angle, if there's no visibility issues there. Um, this is looking at the site from the east looking west, from I fifteen. Um, quite a large site. It's, uh, part of the, the plan and the process to expand the Montana Connection Business Park, so this has been in the works for, for a while. Uh, the planning board held a public hearing on this subdivision on May twenty-eighth. They found that it meets all the criteria for a subdivision, to the Montana subdivision planning act. Um, so yeah, staff recommends that we, you know, approve and forward the subdivision, and I welcome any other questions. Uh, I don't know if you can see us, Kristen Rose is here as well, if you have any questions for her.
Okay, thanks, Dylan. Um, are there any questions for any of the Commissioners, or Laurie, or Dylan, or Kristen? And I can't see all the Commissioners right now, so, screen's up, so I don't know. If you have a question, just go ahead and ask.
I have a question, Chief Executive. Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Fisher.
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I guess, uh, my question is, it's in the industrial park, and it's going to be a subdivision, but it's zoned industrial, if I'm understanding this right. I just need a little more clarification about the process, the procedure we're going through, being it's Silverloaf County land, it's an industrial park, and we're going through a process of a subdivision. Um, I need to know a little bit more about why we're going through this and what the future may hold. Thank you.
Dylan, Laurie, or Kristen?
Kristen, so, so we are going through the subdivision process, because right now, that's about a two hundred and eighty acre parcel, and we are not marketing two hundred and eighty acre parcels, we're marketing, we wanna market much smaller parcels, like Dylan said, between seven and fifty-five acres. And actually, one of the parcels that we're creating is the parcel that Wassa is currently developing. So that is why we have to go through the subdivision, so we have parcels that we can actually sell to, uh, companies.
Follow-up, Chief Executive, if I could.
Sure. Commissioner Fisher.
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I guess that's, I understand that process, but, um, being it's an industrial park in a Tifford area, and it's Butte Silver Bow property, and, um, I just, I guess I'm a little, I just don't understand, I understand that Butte Silver Bow's gotta play by the rules like everyone else does, but I just don't understand why we're gonna go through all this process when we have no really future sca- you, I guess maybe I'm a little lost here about subdivision laws. I always thought subdivision was for private entity to, you didn't understand why I was going in there, and they probably want so many acres up to two hundred and eighty, but, um, I guess I might have to look into this a little further, I'm just a little confused about why we're having this public hearing when there is no public input out there, it's, it's government, you know, it's Butte Silver Bow property. So there's really no public input in the area, I mean, if it's going into a, you know, neighborhood like out by the, uh, that area in industrial park or something, I'm a little confused, but, thank you, thank you.
Would you like to follow up on that, uh, Laurie, or Dylan?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Fisher, uh, I mean, you're, you're exactly right, you still have to follow the Montana Subdivision Planning Act process, so just one parcel now, to get nine parcels out of it, we have to, to follow that as dictated by state law, which is the public hearing, it's the planning board, public hearing and council, um, for the preliminary class, so to get more than one parcel out of this, we have to follow state law. Even for an industrial subdivision, that, that, that's the same.
Uh, thank you, Dylan, that's kinda the question, I guess I didn't understand the statute, and that answers my question, I guess we're just following state law rather than local ordinance and things like that, so, that answers my question, thank you for the input.
Commissioner Olson.
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Uh, my question is about utilities, and I didn't see referenced in the, the staff report, uh, one of the most important utilities I, I think we need, and that's internet, are they gonna run fiber, uh, down the road and etcetera? Or is that coming in the future? Thank you.
Kristen.
So, yes, we will run fiber, I've had initial conversations, um, with, uh, Century Link, who has run all the other fiber out there. Um, so at a minimum, we'll make sure that the conduit is in there, um, but we would like to coordinate with them and get that run at the same time.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Kristen, just to ask a question regarding this, being that it is Butte Silver Bow property, and we're creating the subdivision, what type of work is gonna be required from Butte Silver Bow to lay that fiber, put the road in? But the bigger question, as you know, is who's paying for it?
So, it has always been in our capital improvement plan to have this road, we always knew that, well, not always, but as we have, um, proceeded in planning out this industrial park, we've known that we wanted to build out the road and subdivide and create the parcels that we can sell. So, that will be paid out of tax increment dollars as public infrastructure. Uh, it has always been an unwritten rule that we will not rely on Butte Silver Bow Public Works to do this industri- or this public infrastructure. We will bid it out, that will be coming first before council. Um, hopefully, we're looking to get it bid out later this summer, and break ground this year on that road.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing and call for proponents?
Mr. Chief Executive, we'll open the phone lines as well.
Do you have any calls, John? Any proponent?
Mr. Chief Executive, we're just waiting for the leg to catch up. Right now, we do not have any phone calls.
I'll call the third and final time for proponents, and we'll wait a minute and see if we get any.
Mr. Chief Executive, we do not have any phone calls.
We'll go to opponents. Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Third and final call for opponent.
Mr. Chief Executive, we don't have any phone calls.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing. And we will go to the consent agenda, section two, A Committee Reports, one through four, B Communications, one through nineteen. Are there any segregations or friendly amendments? Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. You don't have to read my lips, I think I'm all commuted. I'd like to segregate number nine, Communication number twenty twenty dash two seven zero.
Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'd like to segregate in, uh, section B, number two, Communication number twenty twenty dash two six one.
Any further resegregations, any of the council members? Seeing none, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve section two, the consent agenda, A, the committee reports one through four, B, communications one through twenty, with the exclusion of number two, twenty twenty dash two six one, and number nine, twenty twenty dash two seven zero.
Second.
Do we have a motion made in second to approve the consent agenda, A, one through four, and B, one through nineteen, exclusive of number two and number nine? Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote?
We're just waiting for the... Oh, you gotta...
It'd be up there now.
Not, yeah. Hold, hold on, Mr. Chief Executive.
There was no box for, yes.
All right, Mr. Chief Executive, it's posted.
Okay, will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? The clerk, please record the vote.
Looks like we're looking for one individual, Mr. Chief Executive. If you could please make sure you hit the submit button. Okay.
Will the clerk please record the vote? Eleven yea, zero nay, motion carries. We'll go to Communication number two, twenty twenty dash two six one, Ed Vander Robb, twenty-six oh one Grand Avenue, requesting Council of Commissioners send a communication to both branches of the state of Montana Legislature requesting that foster homes be excluded like daycares from the definition of community residential facilities by state law. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank, Mr. Chief Executive. Um, you know, when we were just recently going through the zoning changes, um, I really struggled with some of the, with the foster homes, having to have the special, special use permit, um, which led me, led me to believe that I, I think Mr. Vander Robb's idea may have some merit. Um, I guess all we can do is ask. Um, I guess all we can do is ask you to see if that could, if that can possibly be done through the state law. You know, so seeing that, I would make a substitute motion, uh, that we could, we draft a letter to our, uh, local delegation for maybe review and some guidance and to see if this is even possible. I'd do that in a form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to, this is, uh, to draft a letter to the local delegation for their feedback, I guess?
Yeah. Yes.
Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Couple of questions that I have regarding this. One would be for Commissioner Sorich is, is who's going to draft the letter? What kind of stuff do you put in it? Um, as far as contacting the local representatives, I, you know, I kind of struggled with the recommendation on this as well, but as I kind of looked into it and relied on some, on some resources, is Mr. Bandarob, along with any commissioner on this commission, can contact their local representative and, and talk to them, which it's my understanding that some of them have already been contacted on and are, are currently looking at it. Um, and so I don't know if, if, if it's wise that the council, um, create the letter and send it. I think it has as much clout as if Mr. Bandarob sends his own communication, um, or if a commissioner contacts him, uh, or contacts a representative. Uh, again, I, I did follow up with Chief Executive Palmer and, and he stated that, you know, when the legislature goes to convene, they meet with our delegation and kind of go through some topics that Butz Silver Bow would like to, to see addressed. And I think that's a more proper thing than us getting involved in, in that part of it, um, especially with, you know, having no draft of a letter of what we're supposed to send. Um, that's kind of the challenge with it is, is how do we, how do we draft a letter that's going to encompass everything that he's looking for? You know, I, for one, the foster thing was obviously one of my issues with it and that's why I voted the way I voted. But it also doesn't solve the problem is that I think there's issues on the other end of it too, um, with the way we voted in the past. And so those issues won't be addressed in a letter to the delegation. And so, again, I think it's easy to write this communication that says, hey, send a letter to the delegation and not give us any substance to, to follow in. So that's my comment. Um, that's, that's all I have.
You know, John Sessow is on with us this evening and maybe we could get his input. I'd like to ask his input on the best way to getting the word to our legislative delegation on an issue that we want to draw forward. So, uh, Mr. Sessow, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah. Uh, I can hear you. Uh, um, I can only say that it, the process already started. Um, several commissioners have, uh, spoke with various members of our delegation. Uh, Representative Harvey has made a request to, uh, our legislative services, um, staff to start researching the, uh, the possibility of legislation. We, we can't write anything, uh, and since all of the, um, all of the races are contested, none, none of us are carryovers, so we can't, uh, drop in any field drafts. But, uh, Representative Harvey is, is, uh, has asked on behalf of the delegation, um, for, uh, whether we can take any action at the legislative, uh, level, uh, at the state legislature in January. Uh, the, the notion that, um, we would be asked to research whether foster care homes could be excluded, um, is a kind of complex because, uh, the, the early, the, the early, uh, information is that you can't exclude, uh, anything in, in particular relative to the, it's, it's all about the definition of a residential, community residential facility. And, um, so we're on it, uh, we're, we're already looking into it, um, but from a, from a action we might take, uh, in the legislature, uh, in January, uh, that doesn't help much with the action that the council might take in crafting the, the ordinance change, uh, sooner than that, I guess. My understanding that you're in the process of, of that, um, and, uh, you're going to have a public hearing or, I, I'm not quite sure where it is in the city accounting process, but you got to do what you're going to do first and then, uh, you know, then we can deal with, uh, any exemptions to the definition at the state level when the, when the representatives and senators are back in session. So I don't know that we need a letter. We're kind of on it in terms of what we might be able to do, not be able to do. Uh, I would start there, Mr., Mr. Chief Executive.
Thank you, John. Commissioner McDonough and then Commissioner Sorich and then...
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'll make a substitute motion and place on file.
Second.
Second.
We have a substitute motion made and seconded to place the commu-, no, and place the communication on file. On the question, Commissioner Sorich?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. You know, after hearing, uh, John Sessow speak and John Morgan speak, uh, it sounds like the ball's already started to roll on this, uh, so I'll withdraw my motion.
Second, John also. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. You know, I just want to reiterate, uh, I agree totally with Commissioner Morgan and, um, this is not a Butz Silver Bow county issue. This is a state issue. When you get to the state legislature, um, we don't have the delegation we had back in the sixties where we got to push I-50, I-92 Butz. Our delegation is strong and they do a good job, but this is a complex issue and, um, I think it's a good one to let our legislatures, Derek Harvey and, um, Ryan Lynch and those people take over and see what they can do. We got our local, uh, our local ordinance we're working with now and, uh, I don't think we want to muddy the waters with the state by getting Butz Silver Bow involved in it because it might become a partisan issue and we sure don't want to have this issue, um, be a trade-off for another one in the legislature, which sometimes happens. So I think concurring place on file is a good idea. Thank you.
That's not the motion.
Nothing further. Does everyone understand the motion to note the communication and place it on file? Is there anything on the question?
No.
Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Mr., nope, there we go.
Eleven to zero, motion carries. Next, we'll go to commu-, number nine, communication twenty, twenty dash two-seven-zero. Pat Reardon, Land System Administrator, requesting council commissioners to rescind Resolution number nineteen dash two-four, authorizing the sale of property at six-eleven South Idaho Street, tax parcel number four-three-six-one-zero, Butz Montana, five-nine-seven-oh-one. The resolution authorizing the sale required performance of certain conditions which were not fulfilled is now unattainable. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Chief Executive. Uh, so Commissioner Morgan's, uh, recommendation to concur and place on file is correct, but I did talk to Eileen Joyce because if you read the communication caption, it makes it sound like the council can do this rescinding. So I just wanted to amend, uh, the recommendation to refer to the county attorney to draft the resolution to rescind and place communication twenty, twenty dash two-seven-zero on file.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to refer the communication twenty, twenty dash two-seven-zero to the county attorney's office to draft a new resolution to rescind the old resolution and place the communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote? Eleven, zero, motion carries. Next, we will go to section four, ordinances and resolutions referred to judiciary, Resolution number twenty, twenty dash three-one. And then section five, ordinances and resolutions, second reading, council bill number twenty, twenty dash zero-five, ordinance twenty, twenty dash zero-five. The clerk, please read the title.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Council Bill number twenty, twenty dash zero-five, ordinance twenty, twenty dash zero-five, an ordinance amending ordinance two-zero-four, section four and chapter ten point four-zero, entitled Speed Limits of the Butz Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, specifically amending section ten point four-zero, point zero-four-zero, and providing for an effective date herein. At this time, Mr. Chief Executive, I move to place council bill number twenty, twenty dash zero-five, ordinance number twenty, twenty dash zero-five, on second reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass council bill number twenty, twenty dash zero-five, ordinance twenty, twenty dash zero-five, on second reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk record the vote? Eleven, zero, motion carries. Next, we'll go to public comment on any public matter not on the agenda. We'll go to the phone line and see if we get any.
Mr. Chief Executive, we'll open up the phone line. I do have a couple of, um, um, letters to read into the record, so I'll do that while the phone is opening up.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the first one is from Eldon Beal, three fifteen South Dakota Street. Chief Executive Dave Palmer, Chairman Morgan, Council of Commissioners, despite what recommendation regarding consumption of alcohol consumption in Emma Park or any other public property owned by Butz Silver Bow, J.P. Gallagher at the February twelfth, twenty twenty committee of the whole meeting was ludicrous. The council of commissioners constitutes the governing power, governing body with powers to pass ordinances, adopt regulations, and not the Parks and Recreation Director or Committee. Montana Code of Ordinances, section nine point two-zero point zero-one-zero, prohibited exemptions. The use and consumption of alcoholic beverages on the property owned by the local government of the city and county of Butz Silver Bow, Montana is prohibited, except upon approval of such use by the council of commissioners or by the appropriate board or commission as set forth in nineteen point two-zero point zero-two-zero and provided. Further, such as is authorized only where proof of adequate on-premise liability insurance coverage authorizing such use and compliance. All requests for authorization to allow the use and consumption of alcoholic beverages shall comply with all applicable laws and regulations of the state of Montana and all local ordinances of the city and county. Our opinion is the Butz Silver Bow is breaking their own ordinances, that the Parks and Rec Board does not have the authority to allow consumption of alcohol in parks and other public properties for daily consumption of alcoholic beverages. And we've seen that people are the same people for weeks, days at a time, for hours, loitering, taking over the gazebo so it can't be used by other people. The damage that is being done is because of drinking and the excessive loitering. They have spray painted the large pine trees as well as another, um, that, or another, they have carved a giant initial into it. Recently, on Sunday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, my neighbor saw a person trying to pry the boards up in the gazebo. When he went to see what was going on, a male ran and jumped into a van and sped off. The city county passed ordinance in chapter nine point one-six park restricts, restrictions, nine point one-six point zero-one-zero through nine point one-six point zero-eight-zero to run out in the drinking and heritage park, mural park, the exterior around the bus transfer station and the landscaped area in the front of the civic center, as it is referred to in the ordinance, which the last two aren't parks, as it states in nine point one-six point zero-one-zero. To prohibit certain activities, we also agree that the taxpayers should not pay for every Tom, Dick and Harry to use the electricity that is, and basically is theft of services to charge cell phones, plugs, plug-in radios, boom boxes, et cetera. We also agree that the taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for insurance because of liability of the same groups of people sitting, drinking and loitering in the park all day and may be injured on public property. The gazebo isn't in ADA compliance. There are certain groups of people that could frequent Emma Park but can't because of the lack of restrooms, the elderly, disabled, small children. That's why trees planted areas are used as toilets and very unsanitary. Again, that's from Eldon Beal, three fifteen South Dakota. The other one is, uh, from Robert Jangula. Um, I am involved in a foster care system. My wife and I have three foster children in our house. If this zoning law, or zoning change passes, I believe it would be extremely detrimental to foster care in general, but would also make all foster houses extremely unsafe, not just from biological parents of the foster children that, that a house has, but from any disgruntled parents of the children in the foster system that might not know where their biolog- biological children are. They could potentially attack any foster houses and you would be advertising where those foster houses are to everyone. If you want this changed for halfway houses or treatment facilities, I believe you should work with getting the descriptions changed in the Montana Code, excluding foster care from these definitions before proceeding with any few, or anything further. Again, Robert Jangula. Mr. Chief Executive, that's all the letters that I have and there's nobody on the phone.
Before we adjourn this evening, I would just like to comment, make one comment and that's for Mike Thatcher and Kathy Dunst, you know, with CCS. They stepped up to the plate and, uh, yeah, authorized, uh, council authorized me to sign a contract with CCS this evening to provide mental health services for, uh, individuals in crisis in the community and in our detention facility. I think this is going to be a great collaboration between many, uh, groups within Butz Silver Bow and it's going to be a great thing for all of us to move forward. And I'd just like to thank Mike, I don't know if you're still on there, and Kathy for stepping up to the plate and working with us and getting everybody else in the community to work together. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming to us and, and working with you in collaboration with all of the providers in the community. So, thank you, uh, very much. I love you.
You bet. Thank you, Kathy.
Ditto, Chief Executive and Commissioners. Uh, we appreciate the vote confidence. We've been here since nineteen eighty-three and have had some fabulous partnerships with you folks and, uh, we look forward to getting out front of this, being proactive and it being a great partnership. So, on behalf of CCS, thank you for your support.
Okay, thanks, Mike and Kathy. Commissioner Morgan?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any questions? Ask some questions?
Aye.
O's? Aye. Thank you. Your opinion? Adjourn.